Okay, I believe it is 10:00 so if we'll all stand and you know Owens is going to leave us an invitation.
That's great. Gracious heavenly Father, we are blessed to be here today. Well, we thank you for our citizens here before us today, Lord. We just thank you for their participation. Well, we are blessed to be here and we are blessed to serve a great state and a great county. Well, we just ask of your blessing on our county, Lord. We just ask of the sermon and wisdom in all that we do and say, in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay. And I would say, "Pledge your flag."
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In this town, I'll call the board of commissioners meeting, um, August 3rd, 2016. First item of business is approval of minutes for our regular meeting on July 6th, 2016, July 18th, 2016, and our work session on July 18th, 2016. Um, are there any corrections?
There were a couple of type of grabs. Uh, we did have a chance.
If I may, could you please send them off some, and I and Melissa's not with us this morning, to make sure that we do get these corrected. And several have already been pointed out by a few other commissioners as well.
Okay, would, uh, Commissioner Jordan, you will hand yours, type those in, so me and myself.
Yeah, I'll get those too. Uh, I'll make a motion for true D, uh, minutes as, uh, to be modified.
As modified, okay. Motion's been made, second.
It's third.
Motion's been made, second, in discussion. Here none, all those in focus, they are?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Are they, are there any? Here none, y'all have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Absolutely. Sure.
Okay, motion's been made, second, and all those in focus, they are?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, delegations. Okay. Wade Askew? Morning, Mr. Askew?
Good morning, Mr. Askew.
Kind of state your name, you know drill.
I'm Wade Askew, I live in 216 White River Road, York. Um, I just got something, a couple things I wanted to bring to your attention and make up some of the county a little bit. This is, um, from a county that I own, Rock Canyon, Hurst County, where they do this, put a, um, I made contact with the county manager.
Thank you, sir.
When, when I first saw it, I thought he made it a good idea, made it helps on himself, something big kind of, when it comes, you know, time to pay the taxes, so, um, but I just just wanted to give y'all a copy of that.
Okay, fine, so it's a, where you can pay in?
For five months.
In five months.
Okay.
I want to give this to Catherine.
I just, you know, I was interested in that, you know, never predict, so something the county get a little bit. Um, I do have one more thing that I know we've been talking about, the, um, water and feeling and everything. So, I just like to say, you know, all our departments, the county has some really good employees with the water department, the tax department, and sometimes they're, they're on the front line and they take the blunt of all the complaints and everything. And, um, it would be very helpful, I think, to our employees, if, you know, some, they had some of the extra tools to work with, but, uh, I do only, um, report of the county and, um, I can go in there and pay anything I want to, with freedom. And you can go to the gas station, being called gas, with this plan, and you can get a iPhone, you Google thing on there, you can swipe it. Maybe the county's software needs updating, maybe they don't want it updated, but at least you can get the tax department and the water department iPhones that they would be able to swipe it. And just before you change anything, and you apply the bill into the water and everything, consider that. That, that might help a lot of citizens a whole lot in a lot of ways. And that, that's all I just wanted to say, and thank y'all, and hope y'all all have a good summer.
Okay, and thank you so much for your input. Anyone else with a comment? Okay, moving on, administrative reports.
This is the report for June 20th through July 20th. The Trillium Playground dedication took place June 22nd. Trillium Representatives, Board of Educational Representatives, Commissioners, Community Center staff now present. The ripping cutting was covered by WEGETM. Community center staff have told us they have seen more people on the playground in the past month than they have seen in a long time. John Zellweger with Clearspace has received some relatively positive responses to the availability of new but seasoned brick resources for the historic courthouse. He is still working on understanding the availability of historic reclaimed brick and the cost of different credentials. They've taken a bit more time than expected finding these sources. The EDA quarterly report has been submitted for the spray field project. The county is still awaiting EDA approval on extending the timeframe needed to complete the spray field. June 28th, I participated in an NCA-CC webinar that highlighted various programs from USDA, EDA, and the Rural Center. June 29th, county employees were treated to an ice cream social. On June 30th, the Future Work Prosperity Tour, postified the Institute for Emergency Issues, was at COA to highlight and to discuss workforce trends, and I have provided you with the website that includes a slideshow that was presented at this workshop. On July 12th, Chair Hallford, Vice Chair Owens, Clerk Melissa Lawrence, Ombudsman Randy Jordan, Community Advisory Committee members. The state long-term care representatives and I met to discuss the role of the Community Advisory Committee in new federal rules that govern the program. This program is what most of us refer to as the Nursing Home Committee. On July 20th, I met with economic developers from Bertie, Hartford, and Halifax Counties, as well as representatives from the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina and Industrial Extension to discuss branding and marketing for the five counties. More information will be provided as more meetings are held and decisions are made. Do you have any questions?
Uh, do, have we heard anything on the L-Carry request on the, uh?
Yes, sir, that would be on the September meeting because it hangs, I believe, Friday afternoon.
Okay, um, I also hope you attended the Gulf Beach Ag Expo that the county extensions and six counties held at Lynn Mott's home, very informative, a lot of people there, it's a large one.
Yes, I think they said 265 people.
Showcase farming in Gates County and keeping up with the most latest technology, research. Okay, um, and administrative reports. I know this lane has something for us always.
Oh, yes indeed, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Greg.
Um, there were no refunds, of course, or?
That's good.
Yes, indeed. I changed to look at that collective report for July, any questions regarding that, the figures? Um, I just want to say, I'll mention there are no prior years. We, we are striving, you know, for that reason, for the tax notices, so that is the reason. I just mentioned that, you did see that. Um, we're working very hard to get those finalized, those final reconciliation values, you know, for the tax bills, so I just want to mention that. Any other questions on?
Uh, the tax workers, have they been advertised?
Um, they will be the ones that I can comment on in a broad public spectrum of, you know, we are going to have some for sale coming up in October. They've been advertised with the parameters set for the foreclosure process. Um, there'll be some, also some postage of signage in the yard, as well as contacting the adjacent property, you know, owners, if you will, as we approach that October sale date. Um, that's kind of when I can come, comment on the, and the public's setting there for you, but.
Well, will we be able to include any advertising, um, the number of acreage, uh, as well as parcel numbers? I know a lot of times.
Yeah, absolutely, like 3.4 acres, parcel zero six, what have you, yes, sir, all that will be included. Um, and I will say those signs are very large, will probably, you know, this will help them build the grounds to get those set and once we, you know, enter the fall, late September, October for that, so.
Also, I see with 2017 reevaluation, just to let people know that you had done Hall, Wilson, and Hazel, and your next going to be Huntersfield, then Minusfield, and finally Gatesville.
Um, yes, ma'am.
So what is your projected finish date?
Uh, well, as we get into, um, you know, August and, and fall, we're looking at probably finalizing all the field checks, at least by, um, probably early October at the latest, and that includes final field review. Uh, some of the larger farm properties, we may want to print some aerials and go back, you know, those with, um, I'll say multiple buildings, just to have another look and review. And of course, my review that I'll be doing in-house will be ongoing. Uh, we're also, as I probably mentioned, tagging the images per parcel, um, and that'll take place. So that won't be on the internet, so even though we're taking, uh, images of all the new buildings, it'll just be for the tax, you know, and our camera system, so to speak, so. Uh, we are also running additional ads to keep the public, uh, you know, aware that we're out there, of course, and everything, and keep that knowledge base. It'll run, uh, I think, right today, and another addition in late September with that, just to let people know what, what we're doing and, you know, what, what the goal is for the reappraisal.
And they have signs on cars, I believe?
Yes, ma'am, they have.
They have ID on it, they buy it for us.
And we, we got them all IDs, of course, before they started, and, um, they, uh, Mr. Pine also has his own logo on his shirts, if that's of any help, as well as, you know, the signage on vehicles and whatnot.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks.
All right. Any additional reports, command and departments? Is any questions for the commissioners on any of the written reports that we have received?
Madam Chairman, I have none.
Okay, moving on, there's no public hearings today, we'll go to old business. And first item on old business is proposed changes to the customer service policy. I believe that's been considered. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yes, um, when we left off, we had a work session prior to last meeting, and that was the proposal to push back the bill due date. But we cannot legally do that, as I put in the writing, too. We have to, you know, 10 days between the bill due date and the dis却. So as an alternative to that, I have proposed that we keep the bill due date the same, but, um, push back the late fee date by four days. That way, the money has, putting thing in the mail, that has a chance to be cleared in the mail, to get in here, to get to the lot box before the, the late fee is, is swiped.
So, um, what we have in front of us, the building customer, a big build on the last day of the month, and they deal on the 20th.
Right, we could, instead of dealing on the first day of the month, we could give them one more day, by dealing the last day of the month?
Definitely, or the five days.
That's right, before the late fees incurred.
And then, of course, at the bottom of the, um, that the board services that have not been disconnected in the previous 12 months.
Actually, don't like, as Mr. Jordan requested, actually disconnect.
I know, that's right, and I was just wondering, like, is true that?
Right, right, the previous 12 months, but they will be removed from the disconnect list, so all late fees and service fees will be rolled up for the next month. They will still be responsible for this.
Yeah, I mean, they'll still charge the late fee.
Oh, yes, they will still be charged the late fee. And this town, the late fee is still 25 hours. I mean, the service fee is 25 and the late fee is 10%.
10% from the water bill, correct.
Who are in late fee.
Okay, um. Any comments?
Yes, indeed, ma'am.
I think Commissioner, I was going to come up with what, this what?
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I have heard from several of our citizens in regards to the, all the things we've been doing in our work session, too. And some of the proposals, uh, like bring forth to the commissioners, but certainly to the public, is that up the signage fee for signing on to like $50 for the water. And then, if there's a delinquent, then a portion of that goes, and then they, uh, reassign $50 more dollars at, than that, if they, if the water bill is cut off. That particular individual brought it forward to me, was going to come today. Uh, I just went by to try to see if he was going to ride with me or not. Uh, however, that didn't occur. I'd like for him to explain that way. I'll, uh, I'd like to kick that out for, for thought, up in, you know, the signage, like $50, like, say. And then, if they do not meet requirements for water bill, when it is, relative being actually cut off, then the assignment for the $50 goes directly to the water department. And again, in order for them to have it cut on, at a later date, they'd have to sign $50, have to put $50 more dollars into the till.
And what you're saying is basically having escrow?
Yes, sir. And, and the, and water not actually be cut off, save some time, and, uh, but, and, in the event they were always delinquent, they'd always have to be kicking $50 more dollars back in.
Mr. Felton? Okay. Let's talk to Commissioner Jordan.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank Diane for, um, working with us and coming back with a proposal that appears to be workable. I think it's, uh, it's a good start, and, um, but one thing I want to make sure that we as a board recognize is that we're dealing with a critical issue here. Water is a necessity. You know, we're not dealing in amounts of money for individuals that is going to cause the county a tremendous hardship. Though we are dealing with necessities of life. I had a customer, a citizen that called me and let me know that his wife was taking a shower, getting ready to go to the hospital, and the water was thawed. And, uh, he didn't have the money to pay it. But we have in place provisions where we can, we're going to get out money. Whether it takes two months or three months. Cutting off water is something that people have to respond to. So if we have it up our hands, it's not a thing that, that, uh, we're real concerned about the fact that we're going to lose something. So, we can't legally use the 20 days, as Diane just pointed out, based on Jones statue. I think that one of the things we can do to kind of, uh, enhance, uh, customer service, is instead of cutting off 12, and if you don't, haven't been cut off in 12 months, let's kick that back to six months. In other words, uh, if someone has not had the water cut off in 12 months, then you won't cut the water off if they have not paid the bill on time. I'm saying, let's go a little further, let's make it six months. If they haven't had it cut off within the last six months. So, you know, and that's just what we're doing is we're, uh, making it a little bit more citizen-friendly, uh, because, you know, whether it's 12 months or six months, we're going to get the money, because ultimately, we're going to cut off the water. And, uh, so we have it up our hands. I would propose, uh, also, let's go for six months, where we made the change, uh, in item four, page nine, provision, it's got 12 months, that's back to six months.
Okay.
The other thing that we have is, uh, that there has to be more management involvement. Currently, we make up a cutoff list, and that cutoff list, apparently reviewed by you, our customer service supervisor, is made up by one of our clerks, and it's given to our field operators.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have a provision here, and I'm going to pass this out to everybody. That we can have a copy of, well. Neil.
I think we need one more, um, noise on the floor for questions.
Under, I don't know, if you could look under the third, uh, item. It says exceptions. Under special circumstances, the county may choose not to interrupt service. This decision will be made by the acting Utilities Department Director, as approved by the county manager. Special circumstance, now, huh? Now, so this provision here tells me that we already have in our policy, a provision where our utility director should look at that cutoff list and say, hey, we're not going to cut people's water off this month. It's too hot, it's too cold.
And that is known.
That, uh, there, people already on the, on their cards, it says not cut off for health reasons.
What I'm saying is that this needs to go through the utility director prior to implementing cutoff.
Okay, you're saying this goes to Timmy?
This goes through Timmy.
Okay.
Exactly. And Timmy can get with county manager, and at that particular point, uh, they will decide, hey, let's not do it. Special circumstances should include age of customer, health condition, financial hardship, weather condition, and even payment history. So, we need to have a little bit more management involvement in this, because this is a critical issue. This is something that, uh, you know, we've got people's water off, we could put some of them in, in dire situations, especially if it's hot, especially if it's too cold. You know, everyone doesn't have the luxury to go and, and stock up on bottled water. Some people will actually drink the water. So, I think we need more man, management involvement. I would also propose that we add, uh, these sur, special circumstances in our current policy.
If I may, this is part of the policy that needs to be updated, the title, Utility Department Director is Timmy, and they do not do cutoffs.
Well, that's where we got a problem.
But we, if you're going to adjust everything, my recommendation would be to take that out, because they're not, they're not the ones doing cutoffs, they're not doing the billing that comes out of the customer service, and that's what Diane already does. For example, water was not caught cut off in February, and we do not know about health conditions. When someone calls in and says, "You turned my water off," when someone's in the shower, and they do not tell us about other circumstances, they just said, "You turned my water off." So there would have to be some way, I hate to say, to verify some of this information, but that is what Diane and her department already do. They, if there are situations, they already have the flag, if they have certain dialysis and things like that in the computer.
Yeah, but, you know, this, this can happen at any time. You know, if you've got enough, uh, lead time, you can maybe make the county aware of it. Sometimes this doesn't happen. A lot of these decisions are going to have to be made at a spur of the moment. That's where management comes in. That's where these kind of decisions are made. You have no latitude, it's written here. You know, whether it's utility director or, I mean, at least we've got the county manager, our current policy. So, you know, we've got that provision, whereas we can have a kind of response to the citizens of the county that we need when we implement that authority. Because you're not going to lose your money. We're not, we've got the cutoff wrenches, and guess what? If we cut them off three months from now, or six months from now, we're going to get the money if you want your water. So it's not a point that, that, you know, if we don't get this $40, this $30, then we're going to lose some money. We're not going to lose the money, we're going to get it. I just think we need to use, uh, a little more management involvement. Let's drop that 12 months back to six months, and I think we'll have something that we can work with the citizens, and provide them with the quality of, uh, service and compassion that I think we need.
Mr. Owens? Connor?
I want to stay on the same handout that Commissioner Jordan just gave, and I'll give number four. Uh, on the six months, I had, uh, I had stated previously at a meeting a while back that, uh, that I could be in favor of six months, that that would have something. So I, I could put a check mark on that, but I, I thought I would ask, under bullet three, or number three on that same page, and I'll direct this to Diane. Um, we'll just go right down the list, um, and tell me if we're doing anything or any version of this. Where it says age of customer, which specifically age, we're not doing anything on, on that right now.
Not particularly, no, we're not.
I'm sorry, there was an exception made last week while Diane was on vacation. Someone came to me and there was an exception made.
Okay, and was it solely age or age and some condition?
It was solely age, and there were some payment concerns, but it was not turned off.
Okay, all right, so the next one is health condition?
Yes, and they note that of their situation, yes, the county is flattered, and we take that always into consideration.
Okay, and then the next one, um, it's financial hardship. That's a little, gets, can get a little hairy and complicated, but we're not doing anything.
We're not flagging the case with financial hardships.
And the next one, weather conditions, like, um, it's seven degrees outside, we're not going to cut people's water off. Are we doing anything like that now? I think that I might heard Natalie say that we are already doing something with the weather concern.
We did not cut off in February when it was so cold.
Okay, and?
And we did cut off in, at Christmas time, but we do not do that.
Okay, and extreme heat, you know, if we end up going with something like this, extreme heat could easily be?
Exactly.
A factor to, and then naturally payment history is in there, which is really alluding to six months.
Exactly.
Or 12 months, whichever one we decide to go with. Okay. Well, other than that, I Um, well, other than that, I, I have to tell you, and, and I'm in favor of doing what's good for the public, uh, whatever we're talking about here, in, in the water situation. But what I hear on the street, and the, and the phone call is, if you pay the bills, if we would be entertaining any of this, and I'm, I'm, and, you know, and this is just what they're telling. Why, why are we having this? The po- the power company, and they had their cutoff issues to, you know? Um, but, you know, we're, we're remapping and changing so often on these, these things that, I think the public doesn't know what their terms are. And I, I know they're on our, our website, they can go and look and see where our policies are, uh, and where, where this is concerned, whatever. This is two, uh, two subtle changes. Uh, I, I would certainly call the six, the six-month thing, um, a subtle change. We're handing out something here, rolling up the lecture.
It's not like they're cutting off policy.
Right, yeah, and I, I do happen to know that their cutoff policy, rolling up the lecture, is, uh, and they're a great company. It's sensitive and to the public and everything, but I do know that their cutoff policy is very rigid. Uh, I'll say it this way, it's very quick and to the point. Uh, I guess we'll look at that in a few minutes, but anyway, um, I, I don't have any problem with, uh, with, uh, what I'm seeing here, Commissioner Jordan and, and read. Only thing is, we're putting a little bit of, of a burden on our department to substantiate some of these. Okay, for, for example, financial hardship, if I, if every bill I had due, if I just told you, "I, I don't have the money," and it, and it just, you know, and it just went away, that would be much inconvenient. But what Commissioner Jordan is saying, just to validate what he said, is, we're eventually hard when we get the money. It might be in smaller increments, or, or whatever, I, you know, I, I don't know, but it, it also is babysitting. Some of them babys- babysitting, where people aren't making the right decisions. Now, the people who can't pay because they don't have the money, uh, specifically people on fixed incomes, and people who have lack of income, then my heart goes out to them, and, and those are legitimate situations. And if we can do something to help them, then maybe that's the direction we need to take.
My, my view of this.
I haven't had a chance to do it. Yeah, uh, water, I almost become a, I hate to even hear the word "water," uh, because it's a lot, it's a lot of, uh, opinions like the water. I do agree with Commissioner Owens, uh, sometimes people are, uh, are confused, because it seems like this changes all the time. Uh, I think we need to make sure that we keep the date, that it's due the sixteenth, uh, same, because, you know, you know, water's going to be due the sixteenth, if you do that. Uh, I think that we do try to show compassion, uh, to citizens of the county, and I would want us to show compassion with the health conditions, and I think with the wealth conditions. And I think we're all aware, we've had extreme heat in the last few weeks. Uh, in February, it was extremely cold, uh, holidays, you don't, or all, at Christmas time, between Christmas and New Years. I think, uh, the people try to show compassion. I do, along with Commissioner Owens, have problems with financial hardship, because what I hear on the street is, people need to be accounted for. Uh, the water bill is not a tremendous amount of money, but if you're on fixed income, every dollar counts. I understand that. I'm, I'm on fixed income now, I'm over retirement. So, I have, I have a budget, but, um, I think that's a little dicey. I don't see us, because that's getting into, I don't know how you say, this one's financial hardship, this one's not a financial hardship.
Well, if someone loses their job, if someone is, is, if, if you get laid on, and all of a sudden, you know, you've got these bills coming in, your paycheck stopped, I think, after those kind of special situations, circumstances, these are the things that are involved.
Well, I think, you know, they need, and I think, you know, if we can, they, they come to the office, you know, and make a case, or whatever, but, but, you know, I don't think we have to, I don't, I just don't see that. Uh, but I do think we have compassion. Uh, six months is fine with me, uh, with that. But, uh, I do think, uh, the ladies that are in that department work very hard and work with people, um, to make sure that they get their bills paid, but also, we also have to be accountable for what I, you know, for our bills. So.
Okay, additional comments?
Madam Chairman, I would like to just elaborate on this just a little bit more. Uh, when you're talking about age of customer, and these are just examples, these are not, this is not a, uh, a longer list of items, whereas they have to, the, the County Manager or the Utility Director has to go and say, you know, "I'm, I'm doing my checklist." But these are examples of what, if a citizen makes a notice in the county, what, what they would do. They're going to, this, this is examples. We have citizens in the county, uh, some of them are extremely elderly, elderly, and some are just elderly. But guess what? When they lay down things down, sometimes they can get, they've got the money, you know, they... These are cases where you, you know, they need to make a decision, they need to have a, a second notice. If you can't get on that phone, run the bill around it, next one, they got two months that they owe. But guess what? They missed the second one, then, then they're gonna be liable for cutoff. So, you know, these are management items that they can consider. It's not getting hard and bad, and, you know, I have to, uh, do everything I can to find out if this is not a financial hardship. No, these are just examples of what you would be dealing with in case of a customer came and said, "Hey, I only got twenty dollars. My check doesn't get to the end of the month, and, and, uh, I, I just don't have it. I'm living at my full income." Guess what? I'm Mr. Utility Director. I'm Mrs. County Manager. Sir, guess what, I've got power. You go ahead, you're gonna get, uh, a double bill next month, make sure you pay it, because you don't want to cut off. That's the authority that you have. I think it should be you, Bob. It should not be, uh, uh, something that, you know, "Hey, don't pay your bill, guess what, hammer's gonna drop." We've got those provisions, I think.
Well, I think we've always had those provisions, on number three, "Exceptionals." I don't think, when you start making the list, it gets a little dicey, uh, because something might not be on the list. But I think we have people who are compassionate and work with people. I've been in there, I've been where they cannot see me, listening to people come in, and they're very thankful for the rebo calls that they got, or, you know, a daughter or a son comes in and says, "Thank you for calling us, our mom forgot to pay the bill." I mean, we do a lot of things to help make sure that people, water stays on, and, uh, I, I, when we start making lists, I think sometimes we get in trouble. I think we have to have some beliefs in the people that we have hired to do the job in a compassionate way, and I think they do. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think they do, from what I've seen.
Okay, any other discussion? Any comment, Mrs. Henderson?
Customer Service will implement one policy provisions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and you are implementing the policy now that we haven't, but, yes, that's your bill. Okay, do I have a...
Madam Chairman, based on the discussions, I would like to make the motion that, uh, we implement the water billing policy changes as presented by our Customer Service Supervisor, uh, with the addition or modification from twelve months to six months. And, um, it appears to be that the, the board is not willing to add any examples or management considerations. So, I would, I would just make the motion that we implement it as presented with the modification of the six months instead of the twelve months.
Okay, a motion has been made to, uh, implement the changes that the Customer Service Department has indicated, with the exception of changing twelve months to six months.
I do have no question, again, I'm gonna question this, why the Utilities Department Director is, is being considered in this, rather than Customer Service, because Utilities is not involved in this connection, reconnection, meter reading, or anything.
And I think that, uh...
That was the old policy, that was his, that was under number three of the exceptions.
That's, that's true, and, um, that, do we need to change that to...
I think it says, "Acting Utilities Department Director." Uh, while Customer Service is not the acting, well, she's not under the Utilities Department, but she's acting in that, if you're going to review and consideration, you're acting in that, in that, uh, in that position.
And as Utilities Department Director?
It's the title, please.
No, it's, that, Timmy's time, or it's the Utilities Department Director.
So, could we just say, um, Customer Service...
Yes.
Well, well, I would say, Utilities Department Director, or, I mean, I don't see why you wouldn't wanna, um, you know, my understanding of those personnel, they're kinda interchangeable anyway. Sometimes they help Timmy.
Okay, would you like that, sir?
They don't do anything but read meters.
Unless there's an emergency situation, unless he really needs that help, yeah. They, they assist when he asks.
How many do we have?
Three.
And they read meters?
They read, they disconnect, they reconnect.
All right, and when they need equipment, such as logs and trash traps and...
We have that, we're sufficient.
All their tools and whatever, they, they get them?
I provide them.
Well, do you have a recommendation on what Commissioner Jordan's referencing there?
I would recommend that it be the Customer Service Department head. That they're the ones who are gonna be billing half that, of the water.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna make that change as well?
Well, that's actually, that's on the motion that's on the floor.
Just a response. You said Customer Service.
Right, but, but the motion on the floor...
Is for...
Is considering everything else that could be handled in several.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to follow the recommendations presented by, uh, Mrs. Henderson, but it's, it's up to exchange for twelve months or six months to be considered, um, like I was saying.
Like private cutoff.
No, or private cutoff.
And the chairman, I'll say it.
Motion's been made, so I'm gonna end the discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in the paper, raise your right hand. I'm left handed, I get confused. Okay, the motion, almost opposed, the motion has...
Madam Chairman, was it unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Would the court have, have we helped out? Uh, Madam Chairman, uh, I would, uh, at the County Manager's recommendation, I would like to make a motion that under E three, we strike the Utilities Department Director and insert, Madam, if you will, where you want it, if you would state that.
Customer Service Department Head.
And replace it with Customer Service Department Head. I made that motion.
Okay, that motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been made, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in the paper, raise your right hand. Okay, let's fast it over. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd also like to just make a comment that, um, that the items in three, E, that are in red, those, uh, special circumstances, um, we have, we put a lot of confidence in our department heads, and a lot of confidence in our County Manager, and as you stated, uh, Madam Chairman earlier, we are compassionate people, we believe in ourselves to be, and, uh, I believe this board, and the board, would support compassion administered in front of management, coming from, uh, our Water Department, and from our County Manager. If they make a decision, what I'm basically saying, if they use their wisdom, discernment, and their compassion to help someone, I think the five of this, people sitting on this board here, um, would support them in doing that.
Okay.
And I just might add to that, is that, you know, you're gonna get, we're gonna get the money.
We will get the money.
We'll get the money. So, it's not like that, uh, you know, if you make a decision, said, "Oh, well, I just gave away hundred dollars, fifty dollars," no, you didn't, you, you're gonna kick it out a little bit, but ultimately, we're gonna get it.
Um, did you have an update about the solid fees that some of you learned in school of government?
Oh, on the school of government? Um, yes, when the solid waste fee is not paid on the bill, say your water bill is ten dollars, the solid waste fee is fifteen, you send in a ten dollar check, you can still run the water, solid waste fee is still out there, we can disconnect your water because you haven't paid for the solid waste fee, because it's combined on the same bill.
There was some question that asked me concerning, uh, and Mrs. Henderson says, "We just get it in school of government."
Because it was on the combined bill. If it was like it was before, and it was on the tax bill, you know, it's just a new point then. But because it is contained on that bill, so your services could be disconnected prior, if you had been disconnected previously. But what I'm saying is, next month, when you pay the, your bill, um, it's gonna go from the top down. It's gonna pay that landfill bill, then it's gonna pay the water bill for next month. It's not that you can leave that landfill bill and go pay the next month. It's not gonna work like that.
I think the other part of the question was, do we get charged interest, and what do we do with that interest? So, if we're charging...
A service fee.
A service fee on that five, on, I think it was worth a three percent?
Well, no, we charge a ten percent late fee and a twenty-five dollar service fee, so, yes, we are being charged a ten percent.
Well, the word is, the question was, uh, the landfill is not getting that ten percent late fee charge. We're, you know, the county, we're collecting on them, so, uh, you know, that's, that's not a properly appropriating, uh, assessment where it's actually implemented.
Let's speak to that. It actually is, the ten percent late fee goes to the solid waste fund. We pay the landfill what they bill us, we charge our customers a fee, we pay the bill no matter what we collect. So, the county collects that ten percent late fee, and it goes into the solid waste fund, so it is appropriately collected.
So, if we collect, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars a year for landfill, and let's say, out of that, we, we get another thousand dollars late fee, so we give them, let's say, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, we give one to what?
No, sir, we, no, sir, we pay them actual costs. Whatever we, we don't collect for the landfill, we don't act as the landfill. We collect money for the county, and then PCG bills us for landfill and convenience sites, and we pay those actual costs. If we collect a hundred thousand, the actual costs are fifty thousand, we keep that fifty thousand set in that solid waste fund. If we collect a hundred thousand and they bill us a hundred and fifty thousand, we still pay them a hundred and fifty thousand, and the solid waste fund has to make up the difference.
Well, that's my point. Point is that we're making ten percent off of the land bill, they're not getting it, we're, we're, we're getting, we're, we're getting.
Right, we got, we don't, we don't act as an agent for the landfill.
But they will get it in the end, you know?
Yeah, I think that...
It's a line item, they, they will get it in, because a lot of times, uh, the cost of the landfill is not affordable by what we collect.
That's correct, we don't, right, the money sits in the solid waste as a reserve, that's a separate fund, it's a separate everything. It is, it's an enterprise fund, I understand what you're saying, but the money does, it stays with the county, and it can sit in reserve, and we spend it for capital later. When you're thinking landfill, we don't act as an agent for the Burtie landfill, we don't act as an agent for PCG. PCG is a separate entity, and they bill us what we need to pay them. What we collect is dependent upon us, and whether you all bill enough, not enough, the county makes up the difference, or the money sits in the solid waste for later. Right now, we're operating at a deficit, and we've talked about that, we had to go in fund balance this year to pay those bills. And that money that we had as a surplus in the other years will not pay that bills. It doesn't go back into the general fund, it doesn't sit there, it is strictly for solid waste purposes, which is what those fees are billed to our citizens to pay.
So, we, we're billing for a service...
Right.
And then we're paying the service provider as a bill.
Correct.
So, we don't know from year to year what they're gonna bill us for?
That's correct, we estimate the budget, but it depends on their actual costs.
Because it is based on poundage.
Yeah, we don't know how much is...
As, as well as credit for recycling.
Correct, and that has decreased.
And that has decreased, as Commissioner Felton would say.
Change the view, call, oh...
Change the view, call, hold that one, right. Um, if I may ask a question, uh, say, on that deal, John Doe, he has one account number, is it one account number for that customer, not one for, you know, like when you're buying the money that comes in? It's just being applied to his account number. And that one person, John Doe, has the same account number for water and waste?
Yes, that's actually, yeah, more dying question, yes.
Yes.
We get, we get the funding as far as the customer accounts, customer service.
So they have one account number when it comes to that type of billing?
Right.
Whether it be quarterly, for those that have their own resource, they have an account in us.
And then from the commissioner's standpoint, in response to citizens' questions on, hey, I'm getting charged interest on my landfill building, well, that's true. But we don't know what our actual bill is gonna be for landfill, so whatever monies are collected, uh, it could be more or less basically used to take care of people.
Correct, and if, and the solid waste fund has its own fund balance and its own operating fund and its own accounting separate from everything else, it doesn't just drop back into general fund, it's all accounted for separately.
And just to be clear, the questions will come on, Commissioner Jordan used the phrase, used the term, uh, interest. Is, is it actually a service fee or is it interest?
It's a service fee, it's a late fee, it's a ten percent late fee.
Okay, so ten percent, so it is not interest. It is a service fee, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We do it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, another major issue, school financing discussion.
Including in your packet is an email regarding the amount of money. Dr. Williams said that he has a quote that's sixteen million dollars, build a new school. This is one of the most recent, and he acknowledged that bids may be lower. And I had distributed at a earlier meeting some information of various schools from across, that had some information from schools across the state as well as information that was compiled from different vendors that he had spoken with that had provided quotes for schools. We've talked, Sandy and I have spoken with LGC and with USDA as well as with BBNT, and you do have that information that is in your packet. The information that you have, and that information was distributed at a earlier meeting. Anyone else think that I did have two more copies? I believe this was distributed at the, across May or June meeting, I'm not sure. The information in your packet are with the qualified school construction bonds, those are the costs. We have been approved, but we do not have that money in hand because they are bonds and we do have to have purchased those bonds and that would be through BBNT. That information is going provided to you. The spreadsheets are from BBNT. One shows a loan of ten million dollars, and if the loan is ten million or less, they're considered bank qualified and have lower interest rates. If they have interest, excuse me, loan of over ten billion, they're non-bank qualified and they have higher interest rates. There's also the payment, there's also information in there about the USDA interest rates and USDA payments. USDA is willing to go forty years, BBNT is not, theirs is only twenty. This is some, excuse me, fif- fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen. This is the information that you have that we find so that you could consider this information today.
It certainly has been interesting looking at, um, all these numbers and figures and all the consequences that all these decisions will have to be made. Um, at current level, our current debt is what? Payment per year for, uh, now in December we finished paying for this year. But for DSS, the high school gym, and?
Those would be the two that are remaining.
Two, and how much is our debt for those? I mean, per year?
Next year's payment would be approximately six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, six hundred and thirty-five thousand is what we're currently carrying?
No, ma'am, that's for next year.
Next year.
That's the payment.
Yeah, the payment, the yearly payments. And when are any of those debts completely paid off?
The school will be paid off in fiscal year twenty-two and the DSS building will be paid off in fiscal year twenty-six.
And the total, what did we gather, is six hundred and thirty-five thousand?
That's correct.
I, I, I just wanted to just make sure we understood that that debt is on.
Yeah, um, I, I'm gonna come in first of all and correct that. That's included in our current sixty-four cents for a hundred, uh, for a hundred dollar property value. So we already covered all that and that's, that's taken care of. As I look, as we look at the current loan institutions, uh, that are willing to loan the money, the BBNT would be willing to loan us fifty-six million dollars, uh, at four hundred thousand dollar a year payment for fifteen years at zero percent interest.
That's the?
They what?
That's the QSCB. At the top.
Well, it, it says, uh, they'll rate, they'll rate a zero percent.
That's the QSCB.
Right, that's just for sixty-eight dollars.
That we.
But BBNT would be willing to loan that money with the rec, understanding that they're gonna get some other types of, of, of courts, if you will. They're not gonna charge any interest, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, they're not gonna charge interest, we're looking at four hundred thousand dollars per year, which translates to about four point four percent. That amount off of about five cents, uh, for a hundred dollar value of property. That's for fifteen years. When you look at the ten million dollars, getting enough to cover the sixteen billion dollar construction cost proposal for a middle school, this ten million, BBNT is fifteen million, I'm sorry, fifteen years, that's two and a half, um, which puts the payment a little bit too high. But USDA is, is, is willing to do it at two seventy-five for twenty years, which is seven cents. And thirty years would be about five, between five and six cents, and the forty year would be four point five percent. I can feel that, you know, we don't wanna put that burden on our, uh, posterity, our children, whatever long. And I'm thinking that if we did the BBNT for fifteen years, which translates to about five cents for a hundred dollar value of property, and USDA at two point seven five for twenty years, that translates to about seven cents. And we're talking about a twelve cent proposal, uh, tax increase in order to, uh, provide the funding to build the new middle school. Now, you know, we could lower it a little bit if you went forty years, but I think, you know, if you're not, you're talking one or two cents. Even if you did the forty year, uh, with USDA, you're still talking about four point four percent. So, you know, it's, it's really not feasible to, um, probably give it about two to three cents profit. But I think that twelve, that twelve cents would put us in a ballpark where, you know, we could have a short, shorter term loan. And also we could be paying interest free from the USCB loan with BBNT. Now, if we as a board come together on this and say, this is the way, uh, this is the best alternative. I mean, of course, as all of us look at it, you may come up with something different than what I'm saying. You may, you may think forty years better, I don't know. But the total is twelve cents. My concern and proposal is that we go back to the school board, have an issue of another petition, requesting, uh, the whole election to raise these funds for building the school. And then for commissioners to issue the resolution to the, to the election board to make it happen. This is a process. And unfortunately, uh, August of twenty is the deadline, but the election office wants to pay for it then by August the tenth. So, you know, we, we, we've got a short window here. Uh, and I don't, me as a commissioner, I'm not willing at this point to arbitrarily implement a twelve cent tax on our citizens without giving them the opportunity to weigh in on it. And I think we do need to put it on the ballot, we need to put it on a referendum, so that, uh, our citizens can have an opportunity to, uh, hear from the school board, uh, consider the necessity of the school, and when they vote, we vote the twelve cents tax increase, then we're all a part of this. So, uh, Madam Chairman, I would suggest that we, as a board, that we can consider moving forward with, uh, first of all, requesting the school board to provide us with a new petition for election specifying the twelve cents within, uh, the next, uh, three days or two days if possible. And that the commissioners would vote on a resolution today, provide that the school board submits this petition, that we would, uh, approve a resolution, approve, approve that the chairman has signed a resolution, go to the board of education, request, request that they have put on the ballot for our November, November election, uh, asking the citizens that they approve a twelve cents tax increase to build new central, uh, central middle school.
Or you make that into a poll question?
So, I'm first, I'm putting it out there right now for discussion.
Okay. Oh, comments? Any comments about this schools?
Well, we have all, uh, you know, I speak for myself, but including we, we've all looked at, uh, at the materials furnished by the schools and by the following instruction, North Carolina following instruction, as to the needs and have discussed all that with the board of education. And I'm certainly in agreement with Commissioner Jordan on, on our citizens should have that input.
Okay, I'm, I'm, Bill, I have to speak up just to make everyone, especially the citizens who are here today, aware that if this is passed, this is, and this tax will never go away, the school board would have to request it each year. Even though we designate it now as the school tax to replace central middle school. If it passes and once central middle school that is completed, we've paid the bonds back, we've paid all of our debt for that, they will have the authority to continue asking for that twelve cents each year. The commissioners then have the authority to say, yes, you received twelve cents, you received two cents, you received nothing, there's budget time. The other thing to consider is that if this does not pass by voter referendum, the school system has made it clear something still must be done to central middle schools. So an alternative plan will need to be discussed with central middle school in greater detail than what we have discussed in the past.
So now we, let me speak to parts of that into the public about it. But now we're trying to express to everybody that they're, they're legal ramifications and rules that, uh, that she's speaking about. It, it will come up every year, this twelve cent. And that, you know, there's statutes that require these things for specific reasons. But that does not mean that they will get twelve cents for that.
Correct.
That it just, it just means that every year, when it's budget time and they make the request, we'll have to deal with it.
Correct.
Now certainly, um, we'll have to take in consideration until the debt is paid. So they, they don't need to anticipate, oh, it's just that one year that's going away. So that increase, we have to be there to pay that bill. And let me add to that, um, we have other schools in the county, but not in a great shape and we're, so these, and the risks are coming, are coming down the pipe. And, um, as a matter of fact, if we don't, central school is in a pretty dire situation. If we don't start addressing it now, then there'll be stop power. And it can be very upward down the road. So we're trying to, uh, trying to make, you know, good decisions about that. And let me just say that, you know, we're talking about roughly sixteen million dollars. Uh, there's some other quotes coming in that could be lower, but people will be competing to get, to get the job. It does go through voter referendum and the public certainly deserves to have their voice and be heard. We are still faced, we don't know what the outcome of that will be, but a lot of people who see something on the ballot that says, spend sixteen million dollars or don't spend sixteen million dollars. The public needs to be prepared that a lot of people are gonna check that no box, okay? That does not address the elephant in the room. If a hundred percent of the people vote no, it does not address the elephant in the room, which is currently, which is central middle school and the dilemma that we face financially there with that. So, uh, it is an oper, it is an opportunity for the public to, to be heard. And, uh, and we've been meeting with, in open meetings with the school board, uh, to discuss these issues. We've brought professionals in, uh, a few places to, to give us a little bit of insight into it and, and, and give us options. And options are, are shrinking. But we were just to, you've heard us say the QSCB, if I'm quoting that acronym correctly. This is some money that was recently freed up, six million dollars was recently freed up for us specifically. It's earmarked, money sitting there waiting for us. It's not free money, but it is at zero percent interest. So it just, it just has to be paid back in a certain number of years. And so as I'm talking here, I'm just, things are coming up that I wanna make you folks aware of, so that you can ask questions later or so you can advise people what you're hearing. So we are faced with a, with a difficult task. And, uh, and we have looked into repairs on central middle schools, just so you know. And, uh, and we've given a pretty large number, a million dollars just for the roof, the roof alone. But as you get into things like that, you'll find other things and our fear is that they'll grow. So anyway, I just wanted to clear that up to, to, I hope I had cleared that up for you to, for them to understand.
Well, look at this part, well, um, what the county manager says is true, that this is a tax that, uh, continues, the general statute says commissioners each year will, and you may, you pointed out, commissioners will decide whether or not to approve it. So it's not like, uh, that it will go every year unless commissioners decide. They're the ones that has the authority. And, excuse me, Commissioner Owens made a good point, is that we have several other schools in the county. And, uh, you have TSC, Butler, these schools are older than, than central. So at some point in time, we're gonna still need some additional funds. And, you know, as the next board commissioners come along, they're gonna need to make those decisions. But guess what? We're gonna have a tax provision in place where they can possibly utilize those funds for the upcoming school issues. School, school system doesn't go away because as board commissioners, they're tasked, we are mandated, we have to provide, uh, sufficient facilities for the school system. But my concern is, is that many of our citizens and our parents know the situation of, of central school. They know- School, they know, they have ideas. The Board of Education needs to convince these parents, these, the county citizens of exactly, we need to do this. We had a rumor to come out, who could back it, that school, we could do it probably a million dollars, somewhere around there, or less, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that was not their choice. So, I'm confident that citizens of Case County, once they're presented with the facts, that they're going to make the best decision. And it's going to be upon the school board to have the town halls, the type of interactions with our citizens to show down that, hey, for your sake, for your children, for our future, we need to do this. And once the citizens approve it, they put it in the hands of commissioners, and each year, we'll utilize those funds just as we utilize the funds they're assessing funding citizens each year that we collect taxes now. So, I don't think it's, it's something that, you know, we're putting our citizens in a prepared position, the same position that we are right now, whereas ultimately, your elected officials, board commissioners, are the ones that will make those decisions.
Just a comment on this, and what Jack and Henry both brought, but we've got four of the schools. And I had asked the question, what is the plan for four of the schools, so far I haven't gotten an answer, but the only answer I got was that they're hoping that happens. And that's not a good answer. But they will be coming up, and as you said, Cooper and Butler are both old and successful, so we know that they're not going to be coming up twenty years from now, they're probably coming up two years from now, whatever. But I think we would be wise to request the school board to come up with a fifteen-year plan for these old schools. When they come up, it's not going to be part of this twelve cent, it's going to be in addition to the twelve cents for each one of, whatever comes up. But it, I think we need, need to get a little more clarification from the school board too, when we start having these public, well, public opinions and public hearings and people who want that opinion, need to have everything out of the open, left in the field.
Of course, my heart is in education, and certainly I know the conditions of the schools. But I am concerned about all schools. We know it's, the Fortnight, Cooper, and Butler, both have part of their building that's older than that. The high school has some issues as well, it was built in sixty-three, Central in fifty-seven, so all our buildings are aging and aging very rapidly. And, you know, you put all your eggs in a basket, what do you do when the whole shit evolves? And that's really, that has kept me awake tonight, trying to figure out, because I know there is a definite need, but we also, the citizens of the county cannot be taxed until a certain amount. You know, a twelve cent hike is what, sixteen percent tax increase, same thing? And I know a lot of people don't fix in them, so, you know, it's, that's a major task, but also there's a dying need too. So, it is, you know, we need to make sure we do these things wisely and, and we, I definitely think that we need a plan, because while we're on the board, with the school board, in ten to fifteen years, they'll be different, the board commissioners will be different. We need to, but schools are going, we're going to have schools. But also, we also need to look, make sure that we're building to what our needs are, looking at population trends, the school population is declining. There might be some savings that we could make, I mean, that the Board of Education can make in consolidation or merger that might be helpful. As we look at beyond going down the road, they're going to have to look at, please, kind of swell.
But I don't, you know, I don't know what the meeting rules and guidelines are for the Board of Education. But we are, even though we've been moving and meeting and talking about this, we are at a point where we, somebody's going to have to start having emergency meetings, and I'm sure the Board of Education can do that. And as Commissioner Jordan stated, the dates, August the tenth is when the state Board of Education wants the documentation on their desk.
And board of elections. That was the board of elections.
Yeah, board of elections, I mean, B O E up there. Board of Elections is when they want it on their desk in Raleigh. And the twentieth would be, that's the preferred date, the deadline looks like is August twentieth. So, really, today, we, I believe that we have to make a decision on the, on the referendum. If it's, is it going to be on ballot? So, we have to have a motion today and make a decision about that, in my opinion. So, Natalie, I know that you've been talking with Board of Elections about this. Anything you would like, that you would share on that before we go further?
And just, just to piggyback on, on some of the things, I know that in our meetings, one of my first questions, and for our commissioners too, is what is their contingency plan? Because that, that is something, as Commissioner Felton brought up, something they're going to have to look at, something we're going to have to look at, and we will continue to look at, because we don't know what's going to happen. We do hope our citizens are going to back good education. We're all in favor of that, and we're in favor of that being one of the main topics here against county agriculture, certainly on top of the list, and education right along the side, so. But that contingency plan, I know that's probably in many of our minds, and it's been in our minds, and that was my first question, our first question to Board of Education, what is your contingency plan?
But, you know, obviously, the roof at Central is going to need to be fixed, if, if it's not going to be replaced. Their contention is, you know, why put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a million dollars into the roof replacement? And then, you know, in a few years, you're going to have to do something anyway. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion that's going, and we're not going to get into it right now, you know, what more the school may need to do, so forth and so on. But if we allow the citizens, the school board, the opportunity to present to the citizens the justification, their, our need, that's a first step. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't happen, then certainly we'll go into those discussions and find out, you know, what's our next plan. We're going to have to, after December, after November eighth, in LA, we're going to go into, if it doesn't happen, we'll go back to the board and see where we go from there.
Okay, any other comments? Do I, do I have a motion from the board?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we request the school board to rescind a petition for election to pose a question for the citizens of whether or not in the minute of twelve cent passing, the vast estimated cost of sixteen million dollars to replace Central Middle School. And upon receiving that petition, we will authorize the county manager to write up a resolution, as she has an example, and we authorize the chairman to sign that resolution and present it to the school board prior to August the tenth.
Excuse me, maybe board of elections?
I'm sorry, board of elections. Prior to August the tenth.
Okay, a motion is on for us to, for, to have, request a twelve cent tax increase to replace Central Middle School, and we would send that request to the Board of Education, and then we would contact the Board of Elections.
Right, the resolution.
The resolution.
I'll second that motion, okay.
Okay, a motion has been made, and seconded, and any additional discussion. Karen Dunn?
Can you please, excuse me, can you please raise my hands, because on the resolution I have to note.
I'll say a voice, say raise your right hand. I was getting ready to raise my left hand. To raise your right hand. Okay. And then we'll clear the hands of the Board of Education and to the citizens. Okay, the next one, in the old business, we've had three good ones today. Next is a solar farm ordinance discussion. For this one, we have heard quite a few on, I'm buying. At our last meeting, I believe it was requested, to contact the energy companies and ask for their comments concerning the, our solar energy policy, they have responded with letters and their, what their requests are, the contention that forced me about the decommissioning. Of the solar, what happens when they, at the end of the life, and what happens to everything that is on the front.
Does anyone need a hard copy of this?
The Sun Energy.
I have one, I was not able to print the O two.
I couldn't either.
It's in there.
I know, I know.
Okay, good.
But I could not print when I got it, oh, no. Just to very quickly summarize, this, the Sun Energy asked for this change, it's on, or they're not numbered, but it's under I, number one, and it says about decommissioning, in the event the landowners upon whose property the subject solar farm is situated, desire to have a solar farm decommissioned, dismantled, or removed from land property. At the end of the lease, the landowners should have to request the owner of the solar farm to submit a decommissioning plan as provided herein, and pledge a bond or a letter of credit as provided in section D J. In the event the landowner does not request such a decommissioning plan and a bond or a letter of credit for the owner of the solar farm, then no decommissioned plan and bond or a letter of credit shall be required. So, that puts it on the landowners' request that, when he's making his, I mean, he or she has made their deal with the solar farm, they have to do that at that time, or there would, you know, there would be no such thing if they didn't do it at that point.
That's, that's a situation where the landowner maintains ownership.
That, yes, the land, purchasing leasing land. But, you know, hopefully, we'll, our landowners know that they need to do that. E M C two, their idea, what it bears, they have changed in the definition of abandonment, not six months, but three hundred and sixty-five days for it to be considered abandoned. And they wanted to do away with the bond or what of credit entirely. And in the one I just read about I, in an instance where a solar farm is located on land with a limited lease term, a signed and neverized decommission plan shall be submitted to the planning department as part of the special use permit. So, they would say that that could have to be part of their application form. Okay. So, what is, comments?
Madam Chairman, one of the things we did want to address was bond or letter of credit. I think we've got both perspectives on the two solar farm owners in the county. The one is to point out, for bond or letter, they're saying if requested by the landlord under section I, shall match the amount equal to the estimated removal cost of the solar collectors, cable, electrical components, and any other associated facilities, that's the salvage value of the equipment prior to construction. I think this is a partially good statement, partially rational and reasonable. I'm not sure about I just yet, but the bond or letter of credit, if requested by the landlord, is good. And where it says, shall match the amount equal to the estimated removal cost, I think there needs to be a parenthesis there, by a competent professional with no vested interest. In other words, whoever is going to do the estimation of the value of the components, the metal components that are in ground or whatever, they don't need to have vested interest in the, in the company. You know, it could have blade price, it could be whatever, it could be that the advantage. But I think, I think that's a good statement. Other than the fact of having a competent professional with no vested interest make the estimation of the value of the metal in the ground. Because, first of all, you know, if we're going to have solar farms, we've already got two or three in the county. They are providing economic incentives to the county, we're getting tax dollars. I don't have, I don't know if our tax collector tells us just right off what the tax revenue is, but I'm thinking it's probably, probably more than that, I'll estimate.
It would be, I don't have those figures in front of me, but it would be just on the, with the personal property aspect of it, yeah.
Exactly. So, you know, it's not like that we're not getting economic incentives, but they do have to be able to survive. And if the estimated value is such that it would cover the cost of decommissioning, I think that's a good statement. Now, the other, other I, where they talk about in the event the landlord upon whose property the subject solar farm is situated, desires to have the solar farm decommissioned, dismantled, removed, I think that's a little bit, they're telling us there that if they own the land, they decide to leave there, guess what? And they abandon it, and we've got solar farms, and we've got all that there for as long as they keep it. So, I think we do need to have a decommissioning plan. You know, whether it's leased property, whether it's owned by the solar company, they need to have a plan in place. And therefore, I think that needs to be I when we, when we reflect that, instead of at the option of the landlord. You know, we as a county, certainly I don't think we want to see abandoned solar farms throughout the county. But that would be my take on that. I like the bond part, but I certainly want to have an outside, as a, who's not, doesn't have vested interest in the, in the solar farm.
Madam Chairman, on the, on the decommissioning part, I'm just juddging this down, just as an alternative to maybe where you worded that, on the person determining alternative to maybe reword it that, um, on the person determining the decommissioning cost, I would recommend qualified, impartial, third party with no vested interest. Qualified, comp, impartial, third party with no vested interest.
I know, nice answer.
That's a good problem. And that too, if this is the avenue to proceed on, and said that that person should be a professional engineer hired at the expense of a solar panel buyer.
Madam Chairman, we also have our planning director and at least two board members, said three, three board members sitting in the audience. Would it be appropriate for them to comment?
Well, certainly, I, we are pretty informal, uh, is Ms. Baptiste?
I'll let my board go first.
Okay, this, this hot, my, yes, it's my, that's what, what's her, Ms. Hot, Mr. Styler, Mr. Ethan?
I have a, good morning. I have a written prepared statement for you all. I put a lot of thought and consideration into this. In July twenty fifteen, the Gates County Commissioners submitted a question, Gates County Planning Board, of which I am a member, to write an ordinance for solar farms. The planning board decided we knew absolutely nothing about solar farms and recommendations due to commissioners that we had year on our moratorium on solar farms so we could become educated and write an ordinance that was beneficial and practical to citizens of Gates County. After much discussion among the commissioners, they agreed to issue a six-month moratorium. During that six-month period, Ms. Baptiste reached back to NC State University and the solar industry, asking them to come to Gates County to present their views on solar farms. Several public information forums were held in D summer of twenty fifteen and January twenty sixteen. A number of commissioners were present at the forum. After the public forums, the planning board met several times to write solar farm orders for Gates County. This ordinance included a decommissioning plan to go into effect when the solar farms cease to produce electricity. A bond required to cover the cost of the decommission. The recommendation for the bond was to be fifteen percent of the total cost for the solar farm. The planning board sent the ordinance to the commissioners for approval. The commissioners returned the ordinance, asking we meet with the solar industry for their input on the ordinance. After this, Sun Energy One attended the planning board meeting, which they were given two minutes per person to speak for a total of twelve minutes. During their time to speak, they told us the information that they could provide to us, and they told us at that time they did not want a decommissioning plan was warranted or that a bond would keep the solar industry from coming to Gates County. Sun Energy stated there was no such bond in the state of North Carolina. Sun Energy One in O ten attended the commissioners meeting in July to argue that their side of not needing a decommissioning plan or bond. The biggest argument was that the recycling of materials were more than covering the cost of the cleanup. After attending these meetings, I researched among the statements that Sun Energy made during the planning board meeting and Sun Energy and O ten made during the commissioners meeting. I discovered that Catoacan County, North Carolina does have a bond requirement and a decommissioning plan in their ordinance on solar farms. As part of my research, I looked into the federal government requirements for solar energy and wind farms that are established on public lands. To, uh, the Bureau of Land Management requires on public lands that we, that they have a decommissioning plan and a bond, which is good enough for the federal government, it's good enough for Gates County. Okay. I then researched the North Carolina Department of Environmental Ecology and found that they are considering bond requirements for solar farms. The Assistant Secretary for the North Carolina Department of Environmental Ecology stated that there are over four hundred million panels of solar panels in the state now, with some containing traces of basic chemicals. And he does not believe this economically viable for develop, for developers to recycle the waste. Next, I saw the information on solar farms and how they're constructed so I could determine the feasibility of recycling and cleaning up materials, being able to cover the cleanup costs. This is what I learned. You have DC current coming from the solar panel that runs through four copper wire, direct buried pattern, to the inverter that's inside the building, that converts the DC current to AC current. From these inverters, it is put on five hundred MCM copper aluminum clad wire to a step-up transformer, and then from the step-up transformer, five hundred MCM aluminum clad wire again, to put it like to grid for the power plant. Okay? These trenches, these wires are buried anywhere, trenches anywhere from three to five foot deep. My cost, because I'm an electrical contractor, my cost for the four copper wire is four dollars and ninety-nine seventy. I'm sure the solar energy probably is a more purchase price due to the quantity of the purchase of the number of people they use. But you remember why I try to walk you through this, okay? All right. The salvage rate for number two copper wire with, and it's considered number two copper because of the insulation that's involved in it. It's a more like of a rubber insulation in there. It's very hard to strip, if you go ahead and strip wire, but this is very hard to strip off of. But it can be done, you can get it on, bring it on. So, the salvage copper wire, number two copper wire, with insulation, at today's price, and I checked it this morning before I came in, is a dollar and sixty-five cents worth. That's about one thirty, what, which is paid for. Okay? Four copper wire direct buried weighs zero point eight pounds, eight foot. The cost I pay for five hundred MCM copper clad aluminum wire is nineteen dollars a foot. Spending. One foot of that weighs two point zero five pounds. At today's salvage cost, five hundred MCM aluminum clad copper wire is two dollars and forty cents a foot. A pound, excuse me. That's thirteen cents for what the person paid is. It would be up to the landowners to pay for the extracting of the wire from the ground after the solar company has taken anything above that above the ground, which will be the inverters in the transformer. That's where your money's at. The inverters cost a lot of money, the transformers cost a lot of money. And they're all above ground, they ain't got a way back leaving that. Okay? And then, uh, they didn't get too far about recycling the solar panels, which is left to the landlord to handle. Currently, there's no recycling plant in the state of North Carolina for these panels. In fact, there's only one recycling plant in the United States that will take the recycling panels from stock to finish. That means they will take everything out of it. There are six recycling plants within the United States, but they only take a part of, but there's only one that can do the whole panel, and that's in taxes. Another, another interesting fact that I found after doing my research is that Sun Energy One is supposed to be a clean energy operation, which is fine, I think that's great. But they also respond to a base call. And I don't think that's too good. Base call, we might know for clean energy. I think that goes a high line. I was born and raised to live in Gates County my whole life. And like others, I had an opinion, I had the option to leave, but I made the choice to stay. I live here and I started some businesses. I would be the last person to tell someone what they can and cannot do with the land, because I believe in free will. But I do not allow that citizens of Gates County, myself included, or the state of North Carolina, to be held liable for the cleanup costs of solar farms after they're no longer productive. I am not trying to stop solar farms, just trying to be proactive in the planning and decommissioning steps rather than reacting at the end of their life. The planning board has been, many hours developing this solar ordinance. I personally have spent several hours researching pros and cons of the ordinance shall educate input to write in this ordinance. Foremost, and each, each board member put input into development of the ordinance has been the lives of the citizens of Gates County and the future of Gates County. I would ask you that when you consider planning board proposal ordinance, to remember all members of the planning board are concerned citizens of Gates County and have no warranted interest. Today, the Gates County Commissioners have the task of making a decision. I am thinking you have three options. Do nothing and let the moratorium expire and have no ordinance in place. Two, extend the moratorium to the ordinance the planning board has presented to you and adopt and put in place, or extend the moratorium and Gates County Commissioners write an ordinance. Thank you for providing the planning board members the opportunity to apply the ordinance based on quality research and educated input, while keeping Gates County citizens and county future forever. I have heard several things about solar industry, pro and con, good and bad. If y'all were interested in having this information, it would be welcome to.
Certainly. More information, have the citizens we can make. Good morning, my name is Phyllis Hopps, and, um, I'm chair of the planning board. I appreciate everything that Billy said. He is our electrician and does a thorough job of a visiting. First of all, decommissioning of solar farms is necessary. Solar companies can claim they are not, but they are. What happens fifteen years down the road if there's not a decommissioning plan? It is on the landowners and they're expected to remove and restore. Dr. Ron Hynder, who is with NC State, um, and I've got this, y'all can have. I found it's an article that he wrote about solar farming, change in the future of farming. I'm just gonna read fact three. There are, um, four facts to it. Fact three, you could be stuck with the cost of decommissioning these solar farms. Currently, most solar operators are not required to have a decommissioning plan or the post a bond to cover the cost of decommissioning. Their current statement is, this will all be taken care of in the future. Have you ever considered why they are paying such high lease payments and not buying the land? The fact is that these panels are considered toxic waste due to the use of metals like cadmium and rare earth elements. These panels have an expected lifespan of twenty years. Since they cannot be placed in landfills and are not accepted for recycling by any plant in the United States, it is highly likely that they will be abandoned at the site or you as a landlord will be forced to pay for them to be shipped to third world countries for recycling. Don't trust others when they tell you that this will be stopped. It has been in the last twenty years, and I wouldn't bet my future on it being stopped. Make sure that the solar company has a viable decommissioning plan that spells out the terms of disposal, land grading, and restoration of the site to its original condition. Require them to post a bond to make sure they are still around at decommissioning time. By watching how fast they leave your driveway, you can tell how serious they are about the future of farming on your land. I stated this at another meeting before, and I'll state it again, the planning board and Ms. Baptiste have worked very hard. I'm not gonna reiterate everything Billy said, but we have brought in speakers, pros and cons. Some of y'all were there and listened to what was going on. On a personal note, being on the planning board, um, I just don't see how we can justify allowing one or two solar farms companies to come in and tell us what we need to do. They are not county residents, and I felt a little bit defeated when y'all voted to allow them to look at our ordinance. I have never been in my three years on the board for the county commissioners, just to hand over an ordinance that we were working on to somebody that was requesting something to have their input. Um, so that was a little remembrance to me. I think you've done a good job. We can adopt some things, but you don't need to tell somebody that really doesn't have a stake in this county, and they don't, to come in here and tell you or tell us what we need to do. Um, I don't, anyone else in, in, on the planning board is against solar farms. We know there needs to be the decommissioning plan as well as a bond to secure that when these farms are no longer viable, that the panels and everything else are disposed of as needed, and that the land is restored to where it needs to be. Mr. Jordan, we had a comment on the school system earlier, that I don't want to put debt on our children. With, without a decommissioning plan and a bond, they're gonna put debt on the landowners' families for the down the road fifteen, twenty years. Also, I spoke with someone who's been a contractor on, um, I cannot say his name, but he's been a contractor on working with the solar farms in the county right now. I know that Sun Energy has stated that they use a lot of copper. When they could have these solar farms, he said seventy-five percent of the aluminum that he's installed. So, and I'm just gonna close with this. Being on the planning board, in the first meeting I went to, I found out that not everything that we are presented is presented correctly. Not all the information is given to us. And we did listen to when Sun Energy came to the meeting. We did not let them interrupt our meeting. And I, I understand they wrote a letter, and that's fine. But they're not gonna tell us how to run our meeting, just like I'm not gonna tell you how to run your meeting. They were allowed to speak. Again, the only thing they were concerned about is they don't want a decommissioning plan, and they don't want a bond. It's like I was saying, not everything is as it is appears. Just remember that. That's why decommissioning plan and a bond are so important. There was a, um, company that came in that wanted to put up a housing development off of, um, Willington Redd. First meeting I was at, right? Um, we were on the board together then off of Willington Redd. They presented their plans and everything. Myself and another, uh, individual on the planning board at the time voted against going ahead because we didn't feel like they had everything they needed. Upon doing further research, I found out that this real estate company was building on wetlands. And I got in touch, in touch with, um, the Army Corps of Engineers to find out I needed to educate myself. And come to find out, they did not meet all the requirements that the Army Corps of Engineers needed them to make. I got copies of all the papers, and the papers that these, this realtor gave to us, the planning board was missing several documents. We never had anything signed that they gave us. So I got the originals, and that's been over three years ago. And they still haven't come back because they didn't do things the correct way. So all I'm saying is, just make sure it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Baptiste?
I'm glad I let them go first, 'cause they took most of my comments. Um, I would like to just say that, um, going over both of the letters, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. If you look at the letter from O two, they tried to equate a solar farm project with the same as a supermarket or a gas station going out of business. This is not so. A solar farm is a singular use. It has one purpose, to produce energy. With a gas station or a supermarket, you have options. You have a building there. You have a building there that can be converted to another use and used as another commercial use or somehow converted into a residential use. With, again, with a solar farm, it is one, a one-shot pony, it does what it does and then it's gone. And we need to make sure that when we allow a solar farm to come in, that they have some kind of vision of what they intend to do ten, fifteen years from now. Because as Ms. Hobbs stated, we will be putting a debt on our children that we may never even be able to recover from. So that's all I would like to say, because as I said, they did a really good job of presenting the information. I really would like to say to my board that is here and the members that are not here, that I really appreciate their participation. I have worked in planning for over ten years and this board has actively participated in getting this plan together. They have come in prepared to every meeting, going above and beyond what we discussed during the meeting to find out additional information. And it is really appreciated and it's really hard to find people that dedicated to doing a good job when they are, they're not even employees of the county. They're doing it because they love the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have heard from the planning members and the planning director. At this time, we have scheduled a meeting, a special meeting on the sixteenth to provide the extension of the moratorium. Is it sixteen?
It's that Monday.
Fifteen is the best.
Fifteen, yeah.
No, it's a special meeting to extend the moratorium.
It's not a talk here.
Sixteen?
Fifteen. Fifteen is that Monday at six thirty.
I'll be ready for further discussion, Matt.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I would like to say to the planning board, thank you for your service. I want to commend you because, first of all, we think you've done a good job. Just keep in mind this board appointed you as planning board member because we felt that you were gonna do a good job and we do thank you for it. I do want to remind you that, you know, any differences that we may have is not a reflection on the fact that that we don't feel you're doing a good job, but we're just trying to get the best. We get all minds together, then we get the best product that we can possibly get. And I agree that we do need something, we need a bond, we need a letter, we need something. I believe our intent was when we asked the solar company to have some input, was to provide something where we could come together and get the best product. Not necessarily have them dictate to us what a bond or a letter or what should look like or whether or not it's required, but just to have the input. And I think that the discussions that we've had already, where I believe Sun Energy two, I believe that's one, we got Sun Energy one, they are proposing a bond or a letter if requested by a landlord under section one. I would tend to agree that we need a bond or a letter regardless. I would strike that if it was to happen. I think it's something that's needed. But I do feel that the portion where it says, shell match amount equal to the estimated removal cost of the solar collectors, cabling, electrical poles, and any other associated facilities, less the salvage value than the equipment for the construction. So, you know, if the, if the salvage value comes below, guess what? They're gonna have to come up with some more. So I don't think we're, I think the compromise is good. It's, it's not gonna take the, almost all of the solar energy, but certainly if, if the salvage value is there, they'll get that credit for it. But that would be from an outside, as you pointed out, qualified engineer doing the estimate. And, you know, having said that, I think we believe in the fact of having to have a decommissioning plan. So I don't think we're far apart. I think it's just coming together and starting to make the best of what you all have provided, plus giving the solar farms some kind of input where we say they can survive with this. Now, they may say, well, hey, that's still too, too stringent, but, you know, we've come, we've come some distance and I think that distance is, from my perspective, is sufficient to present to the solar energy corporations and also move forward with the ordinance once we approve the moratorium and/or allow them to incorporate all of this stuff.
I would disagree with the part of the subtracting the cost of value of the salvage material. That would put a very big headache on the, on Gates County residents or Gates County Inspector's office or whoever it is to have to go like that and load that stuff up and sell it for a salvage value. If it's gonna be done this way, I think it's got to be the, whatever's gonna, estimated cost of decommissioning, whatever that is, no matter what you get out of it, whether they find a pot of gold right there or what it is, that's not gonna make any difference. It's gonna be the cost of cleaning it up and that is the one to clean it up that we have in the material. If they can recover some of their cost in the, in recovering the material, that's fine. We should in no way leave it to the county to have to salvage the material.
Well, we can put that in there. I mean, if the, they're saying a bond or a letter, that's the salvage value. So what you're saying is that it's on the county, on the landowners to get, get it out of the ground and sell it. That's your interpretation of that?
He, he says that it should say, everything that you said up until the last part that says less the salvage value, correct?
Yeah, if, if a professional engineer comes up and says it's been cost three million dollars to clean this ground back up and that's what the bond should be. Not immaterial of whether the copper or aluminum that they dig up might be worth fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, if it's a cost of three billion to clean it up, then that's what the bond should be.
Okay, now, the decommission plan is gonna be what solar energy has to provide. So this, this is what we're gonna do. All right, we're gonna clean this up once it comes to an act of action, for example. So, now they're gonna issue a three million dollar bond. They're gonna get a million and a half salvage value. But the whole twenty years, they're gonna be paying for a three million dollar bond that they could have been half of that because they got this million and a half dollars of salvage value. So that's what, that's what the company's saying is that, hey, why should I pay a three million dollar bond for twenty years? When I know I've got a million and a half dollars in the ground? This is just for example. Why not let you pay for a million and a half bond for twenty years? And then when the time comes to remove it, I've got a million and a half dollars in the ground, plus the solar million and a half we put to it and I'm gonna take it away. So it's almost like we're gonna make them pay for something for certain number of years and just disregard the fact that, you know, they've got that, they've gotta do it anyway. They've got to do a decommissioning plan. So, you know, I think that's a little bit, to me, it's a little bit unfair to have.
I think if, if we, thank you, if this, look at it and just say, and just leave off less salvage value. If we have an expert to tell us how much it is, that would be the number we use. You know, if it says a million and a half, the bond would be a million and a half.
So, so what you, what I'm hearing is that he will, the estimator themselves would take that into consideration?
I mean, well, I'm just saying, if we want to ask an expert who has no vested interest to come up, it, the statement in this form, he says, shall match the amount equal to the estimated cost, removal cost of a thing. If that's the cause, a million and a half, that should be what bond is. And then if they come and they want, I mean, you know, that's, they remove it? Or the landlord removes, but he knows the landlord has a million and a half, and remove it?
Correct, and all that.
I mean, so it wouldn't be, it would be just what it would cost to remove it.
Yeah, well, and I understand that, but what I'm, the thing that we're, we're not considering right now is that three million dollar removal cost, example, is gonna cost them a hundred thousand dollars a year, for example. That's what you, that's what the George companies, they're gonna put a cost on that.
Oh, you're considering cost of law?
Yeah, so they're gonna be.
I thought you said that is cost of doing business.
Well, you know, this is too vague, you know, when you don't, when you don't have, we want economic development. We wanna bring in the best for our county and, and, and we wanna stay up to what the future is calling for. But at the same time, we gotta have a vested interest as well. We gotta consider what their cost is, whether or not it's feasible for them. So, you know, if you just turn a blind eye to the fact of saying, hey, I don't care how you operate, but this is the way it is, then what you're gonna find is that, as they've said before, they can't come to account. And, you know, if you don't want to hear it, that's something different. You put the bar so high that they can't get to you. That's what it seems to be. They're telling you that, like, they're willing to have one, but, you know, let's make this workable.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Do you know what the Thomas Plan says?
I don't know.
So I, it's in that, it's in that material that I gave y'all?
We have, we have had chats to read that.
There's, there's three or four, the Thomas Plan calls for a North Carolina licensed engineer to give a quote of what, what the estimated cost is, plus I think it's one point two five percent, something of that measure.
It's, you don't have a timeline with it?
Oh.
She says twelve seventy-five.
It's on the second page, by the way, I think.
Oh, the performance guarantees? Okay, they were saying a, a bond that's renewed automatically through by the planning director and company with the United States Treasury listing a certified companies. A bond must be submitted, must be submitted to the planning department to be verified, bond is properly renewed, a certified check deposited with county finance director, an escrow agent who will deposit the check in an interest-bearing account of the county with an interest accrue into the app. So the applicant would get the interest. Funds deposited with county finance director will be, will be returned when the solar farm is decommissioned and any necessary site work is completed.
If I may go to the paragraph before that, I think this might answer what you were asking. It says that they must include with their decommissioning plan, the anticipated price of a solar farm, estimated decommissioning cost in current dollars, methods for ensuring the funds will be available for decommissioning and restoration, and the manner in which it will be decommissioned and the site restored. Then it's further down, it says, prior to issuing the zoning compliance certificate, applicant must provide the county with the performance guarantee as provided in subsection four, which is what Chair Hopper read. The amount of the guarantee shall be one and a quarter times the estimated decommissioning cost minus the salvageable, salvageable value, or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is greater. Estimates for decommissioning the site and salvage value will be determined by North Carolina licensed engineer or licensed contractor. It is the responsibility of the applicant to provide the county with the certified cost estimate.
I think that basically kind of incorporates and enhances what we're saying.
Natalie, could you give us a copy of that?
It is, Mrs. Simon has.
No, that was, that was his copy. I can read it there in March.
Do we, do we need a motion?
Yes.
I will move that we, assuming that we're going to extend the moratorium and give it a time to do so, my motion is that the planning board go back to what they have heard today and revisit the decommissioning section of their ordinance and bring it back to, make it earliest of meetings.
Because they need.
They need August sixteenth.
So y'all can, so you can have a report for us first, that first September?
I think, I think the board, planning board sees kind of the way that we're leaning. We're not saying not have one, but, you know, based on what the Thomas, what we've discussed, you know, there's a, there's a middle ground. I think that is probably pretty plausible what everybody's looking for. I second that motion.
Motion's been made in second to the planning board for the work on the decommissioning part of the ordinance. It's been, motions been made in second, in our discussion. I don't think I would say there's been a lot in the newspapers in recent weeks by all places in North Carolina and also with people in Raleigh, some state agencies, looking into this very issue. So keep abreast of that.
I have a lot of that information in that stuff that I gave you.
Okay, it's because people in Raleigh now are very concerned by some aspects of it.
Natalie, I would like to say thank you to the planning board and the director for the work that they've done, not only on this, but I know, and you know, you've been on the board too, how much work is put into some of these things. Sometimes you think people will come to these meetings not having an idea of what they're coming to, but for most of these members, they put in a lot of time and research and dedication so that they can make reasonable, positive decisions, and I thank you.
I, I hope I really agree with that and I know you've worked tirelessly on this, this issue and many others are coming forward. And we do appreciate that. All our.
I'm sorry. Matt, Kevin and I too would like to, to express what Commissioner Felton and Commissioner George also said about our planning board. I too was able, several, several members that are here. I know that we make those performances and we think about that wholeheartedly. We know that the folks we're looking at are motivated and continue their motivation. The research they've done, we, we have that opportunity to see that, not on the paperwork. But again, to, to say, I know they're dedicated by serving on the board and I hear that in the information they bring forward to us. Their goals are really in our goals and we don't forget that. We don't want this to be personal goals, even though we all cannot abstract from the personal things that we know about certain things that we look at from the planning board or from other boards. However, that vision must, must stay the same and the decision that is made is being shared. So I want to say that to you. Thank you, thank you.
You can certainly see the compassion for the issue conceded in the way you, when you stand at that podium, you can hear your voice. How you feel about the camera?
Okay, well, thank you. I got the clip, what was the motion for? Oh, yeah, the motion, you need to vote. Okay, so everybody can take a vote. All those favor of sending it back to the planning board for work on the decommissioning plan and to report back in September to the board commissioners, raise your right hand. Vote is five to zero. At this time, that ends our whole business. We will take a recess at this time and we will come back.
We have to, that's still part of the meeting. We have a five minute recess to go to lunch and we have to read the thing.
A five minute recess for lunch?
No, to go, to go to lunch, and we have to call the meeting back to order, and then we have to come back and finish the rest of our meeting.
Okay.
About one hour, is that correct?
Okay. We're, we're timing recess.
We have to hear about what the decision is.
Okay, we'll come back into session nine, and we are at new business. And our first order of new business is a proposal to consolidate public work staff. I believe that's supposed to hedge cap. Good afternoon. Starting at eight more, but it's good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just coming to you, not asking for any action, just a consideration to consolidate the three meter reading staff. Members back with public utilities. Currently, we have three full-time staff, including, four including myself. With sewer coming online, it, it's going to demand more. Y'all have approved to hire one staff member primarily for sewer. Currently, we've had more applications for new meter installs in the last six months than we've had probably the last three years. We're having consistently more and more leaks pop up. The system's thirty-eight years old and is demanding more and more repairs. There's been an increase in paperwork demand from waterside, from dener, sewer side, from dener, as well as increase in county demanded paperwork. And when this original proposal come down to split the meter readers from utility workers, it was approved, we had five full-time employees and four part-time staff. Currently, we're sitting at three full-time employees and no part-time staff. And, and one of the largest issues is, is safety concerns. You know, currently, i- if we have a bad leak, which we have some on the list now that are on major highways that are going to demand more personnel for traffic control, I have to go to the customer service department and request help. And that has the potential of either putting them behind in their work as far as reading meters, or we have to prolong when we can do it until meter readings are complete. If, if we merge the staff back together, it, it would give enough staff members that if somebody took vacation and somebody caught in sick, we're currently, it displaces our workday as far as what we can accomplish safely. You'd never miss a beat. You could continue right on working. One staff member out sick for vacation would have zero effect. Leaks and meter installs have the ability to be fixed in a timely manner or installed in a timely manner. Meter reading efficiencies would increase, um, potentially with less mistakes because there's less amount of meters one individual will be responsible for. So less need to rush to have them completed by a certain date for entry. And it just, all around, it'd be a win-win. It'd allow productivity and efficiency to increase as well as give the girls in the office a little less to have to worry about managing meter readings. Then meter readings would come in quicker so they have more time to enter monthly reports or entertain changes to customer service policy. And that, that's really all I have. Just ask you to consider, to think about it, and see if that's an option. And it's something to be willing to entertain. I'd be glad to put a little bit more time and effort in putting something together more efficient.
Okay, so, Dan Hughes, any questions or comments?
I just have, I need a couple of blocks to fill out. Currently you have three full-time and no part-time.
That's correct.
If you did what you were talking about, you would have, how many full?
There would be six full-time, seven count for source there.
Okay.
Would there really be eight? Because you would, or.
Yeah, I would, I would make it.
So currently, the three full does not include you.
That's correct.
Okay. So, what you stated too is it would be six full, there'll be seven full, including the sewer person.
That's correct.
And no part-time.
That's correct.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've made a proposal to the board that, that we, um, have County Manager take a look at this and, and bring evaluation back and, and recommendations to the board. And we would, uh, look at her recommendation and make a decision on whether or not to, to carry through. Looking at all the factors, because no matter how you look, you also got to look at what effect the changes come down to. And the time that it's in better position to have, we all to, uh, consider all aspects of it and, uh, all the benefits. Give us a recommendation.
Do we need a motion to that, or just requests, I think would be the only thing that we'd need, to request County Manager to look in and, if, if you're, and evaluate and report back to us.
September.
I'm not going to guarantee that it will be in September. I do plan on taking a vacation at the end of this month.
Well, we have two meetings.
So it may be the second meeting in September.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, and we do have sure all these things. I know coming up that, I mean, with the schools and all that, that we need to concentrate on. Okay, so, and it's, yes.
And if I might add, one of the things that brought on this split, um, originally was because I had three staff members on the side of the road fixing a leak and the County Manager kind of felt that, that that was extremely unsafe is what encouraged splitting and adding more employees for the safety factor.
Okay, well, we'll take that, I'll, under advisement, she, what she does for evaluation. To report back, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, move not to second. Get County ABC Board appointment. Now, I'm going to give the, uh, Park, George Parker Kittrell Jr. to be reappointed to the, uh, ABC Board.
I'm looking to let Parker Kittrell Jr. be reappointed to the position he has held for the past thirty-three years.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made in second and in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so George Parker is going to be reappointed.
George Kittrell Jr.
Gene. But that is George, I mean, we call him George Parker. Okay, surplus request. We have for us one from the Sheriff's Office for a Rico copy of that they got from the Regis D's office, uh, in 2015 and asking to have it put on the deals with an opening bid of three hundred dollars. I assume that it has played out.
No, it still works, however, there is no need for it.
Okay. Still works, but no need, okay. What is the pleasure of the order?
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, allow the surplus plus copy of it to put on the deals with a minimum opening reserve open to be at the end of.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion's been made in second and in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so that goes on. And we'll ask if the budget of then, Mr. Tilden.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've got budget of then at three for you today, I think it's in your packet. Attached to it was the email to me, it was sent normally, that doesn't get attached, but this one kind of came in at the last second. But basically, we have a project that he's working on that we started last fiscal year. The funds were budgeted, did not get expended, so we need to carry them forward into this year to finish that project.
Okay, so it's really a housekeeping issue.
Correct, we might have rolled it in front of us because, because we didn't spend it last year. So he needs to budget and complete that project.
Okay. Do we have, entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made in second and in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we now will have, um, con, are citizens comments? I don't think so.
No, there were not, I'm sorry.
Okay, and we'll start with commissioners' comments. Start right now with Mr. Free. Yeah, let's start in the middle with Mr. Jordan and write this one. We'll do it different.
All right, well, certainly, uh, I thank all our citizens who came and stayed for as long as they could. And, uh, I do want to thank our county staff for all of their hard work and all of our various boards as well. We thank you for your service. We know that it's sometimes a sacrifice, but, uh, when we serve the county, we're serving ourselves too. So we say thank you and, um, just hope you have a great day.
Uh, thank you for coming today, and we had a good audience for the first, first part of our session. And it's very good to have everybody here and taking part and showing an interest in the county. And we appreciate comments from our water departments and to see how things are working. And it's, it's just good to see all the participation in, uh, and we have our Regis D. sitting there, that's what she had to say a thing about, what she had to come over my side.
Yes, uh, good day, and, uh, again, just to reiterate the fact, we appreciate, uh, all the involvement with our citizens and into the county and into our county government. I will, uh, mention again that, that we appreciate the folks that we appoint. We appreciate the applications. We do review those and make those appointments determined upon the fact that those that are going to be appointed do have motivation factors about them, that they are dedicated, and that they do have citizens of the county in mind when the decisions they make and not their personal decisions, setting those aside and making those, bringing those forth to you and also to us. So, for that, uh, good day.
I too would like to thank the those who came this morning to listen, and we had some very weighty issues this morning to talk about. And I think it's good for as many people as we can be here to hear those. And of course, there will be those who will check back on website. And be sure to do that, uh, where you're interested in what's happening in the county. You know, I do appreciate the time and that it's taken by people who serve on our boards to study issues and to give their all to try to come up with the best decisions for the county. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but we certainly value these public service, uh, service. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank the people I serve with. We all are in it for the same reason, that we love the county and we want to do the best by, not only for ourselves, but the future generations of the county.
Well, we did have some, some heavy, heavy lifting to do today at the top. And, uh, you know, sometimes we get caught up in the dollars and cents and the price tag. But we also have to look at the future of the county, the environment of the county, particularly, uh, the environment that our students are faced with, specifically at Central Middle School. So we need to provide a good, uh, educational environment for those students. And, uh, when it all comes together and a decision is made, I know the Board of Education, as well as the commissioners, we're, we're hoping that it'll be embraced and we'll have some strong backing whenever a decision, uh, comes down the pipe concerning Central Middle School. Have a great day.
Okay, at this time, we will enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina Jones Statuary 143-31811. Consider legal economic development, real estate, and personnel matters. We'll take a short, short break, get the doors closed and all attorneys come in. Oh, yeah. Motion's made.
Second.
In second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
Motion's been made in second to come out of closed session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Uh, a motion from, I have closed session to approve the, or request the tax administrator to contact the attorney to put in action to the recommendations that were brought forward.
So move. Second.
Motion has been made in second, um, in this discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I'll entertain a motion to go into recess until, um, August the fifteenth for our special meeting then.
So move.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You.